Have we heard from anybody or is everyone scheduled to be here?
Shannon just joined on line and I saw Matthew. I saw Dan and Mom yesterday.
Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Scottsville Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, July the 5th, 2022. My name is Matt Lawless. I serve as Scottsville Town Administrator. This meeting is being held in compliance with Virginia Free Move Information Act and the state's open meeting laws. The meeting is open to the public at Town Hall 401 Valley Street. We also have opportunities for the public to participate online or by telephone here on the Zoom panel. The meeting is held in hybrid format and both commissioners and the public have opportunities to participate in either fashion. We have a forum of our body here now, but not every month, so we'll leave us a moment before coming to order. Thank you.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Do we need to take attendance?
Yeah. Anybody present?
Present. Here.
I will be asking those online about where they currently are, reason for attendance, and if they wish to use one of their two absences to be able to vote on this meeting day. Matt or Mr. Johnson?
Hello. Hi. Here, I'm currently attending from home. I'm staying home because I'm not feeling very well and I wanted to say.
Anybody? Would you like to use one of your two absences?
Can you clarify? Did you just say that that would mean that I'd be able to vote?
Yes.
Yeah, um, I think I should go ahead and do that.
Commissioner Strassner?
Hi, yes, I am at home also. My youngest son just tested positive for COVID, so we are at home. What's that?
I just said, I'm so sorry, Shannon.
Oh, thanks. Yeah, yeah. But yeah, I didn't want to get anybody sick. I'm not sure if the rest of us are going to get it or not. So yes, I would like to use my, my vote, voting power tonight.
Thank you both for joining us remotely. I appreciate your flexibility and I hope everyone feels better soon.
Thank you.
That would be all. Shannon?
Thank you. Agenda. Question. Do you want us to look at that tire plan map that you had shared in email as new business? Or should we just have that for our FYI right now?
It went to town council as well, so I could share it in there, but there's no action on it.
Very good. I'm happy. Anyone have any questions about the agenda?
Oh, I would like to propose that we accept the agenda.
Do we have a second and a vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, very good. Thank you. Past meeting minutes. Did everyone have a chance to review the minutes from May 2nd and May 23rd?
Yeah. I make a motion to approve the minutes from May 2nd and May 23rd.
Aye, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
For the benefit of those remotely, Ms. Rostner and Mr. Johnson, do you have the meeting documents with you? Or do you need me to screen share everything that we do tonight?
I have. I downloaded them.
I did the same.
Excellent, thank you. One more set of clicks for me to worry about.
Um. Mayor Smith, would you like to give us a report from town council on actions relevant to planning commission? Or should we ask Mr. Lawless for that?
I think Matt would be more accurate and it's pretty best than obviously.
Thank you.
Town Council met two weeks ago right before Batto Festival and spent some time on the festival planning details for Batto and Fourth of July. But of more interest to planning commission was the approval of the special use permit at 345 East Main Street. That was the tourist lodgings in the Colonial College. That was a unanimous and swift vote and the council thanked the commission for its research work on that. There's, there was a little more discussion about the kind of longer term policy solution around these home states and tourist lodgings. And still some interest in working on that, but the council discussion was that this particular example of it was right in line with town goals. Not a difficult decision. There is a, there's a new appointment onto town council. So congratulations and welcome to Bill Heisen, appointed into the role that Stuart Monson resigned from and retiring from his job and traveling the country. He could not continue to serve. So we're wishing him well on his travels and welcoming Mr. Heisen to the council for the unscheduled term, which runs through December. Town council may take the roster change opportunity to shift some of the other committee assignments because of the amount of turnover the council has had last year. So they'll work on that at the next work session next week. And if that, if that unites my professional.
Okay.
That was all for town council this month. On planning grants, we're going to speak to those.
I'm sorry?
The planning grant, from the fact that one bits.
Yes, if you, yeah, if town councils looked at it.
This was, we had some update for it at the work session in June. That's ongoing economic development and planning work. The town won a $75,000 planning grant from the State Department of Housing and Community Development back in the spring from a source called their Industrial Revitalization Fund, which has been used well all over the state for about 10 years to repurpose old industrial buildings. Transitioning then into a more modern economy. From downtown Richmond to small towns like Blackstone and South Boston. Many Virginia communities have these big old, usually brick, abandoned industrial buildings that aren't serving productive purpose. They're ugly in the community. They drag down the energy in the whole community and they're not generating much in the way of tax benefits. So it's in the state's interest to figure out how to revitalize and reuse them. The planning grant part of this is new. They used to just give renovation grants, you know, and those would be a million dollars each. But you had to already know what was going to be done with the building and who was doing it and how many jobs they're creating. That created sort of a gap where if you knew you had a problem but didn't know exactly what would fix it, you were kind of stuck until someone figured out the solution. So I'm really glad that the state has this planning grant in place now to help us study this building in a little bit more detail, answer some of the questions that have been bothering us that we've known to ask to our small area plans, yes, answers. So the deliverables on this planning network include both a field and a laser aerial survey of the building to get accurate drawings on it. We don't have the 1940s blueprints of it. We don't know exactly what's there. So that survey is complete and we have both a paper and a computer model of the building that can be used for future renovation planning. And that data is available to anyone who might use it to try to renovate the building. That's exciting. The, this, the kind of key middle piece is a phase two environmental study. Given the history of the building, there was a lot of community concern about possible pollution that might exist in it. And that's a big question mark in the budget on any renovation. The phase one environmental report has been done three times whenever the property changes hands. But that's just a kind of a paper research of how is the site used? What official correspondence is there? And it doesn't formally answer the question of is there anything in the ground? So it wasn't good enough to answer our doubts. The phase two goes into more detail. It repeats that documentation work, but at a more thorough level. And then the key addition is chemical engineers drilling test wells all over the site. So they drilled eight wells around the perimeter of the building where there were potential hazards based on the operation, loading and unloading sites, known storage sites, that sort of thing. They also drilled three wells through the slab of the building and into the ground underneath to see if anything had gotten through the building in the course of operations. And those all came back clean. The whole report is 150 pages long and details, sort of like when you go to the doctor for blood work, all of the things that they tested for and what the level detected was, if any, and then explaining is that a hazardous level? So everything from petroleum and waste oil to benzene and formaldehyde steering industrial vehicles. And the only, the only threshold of a chemical that they found was called naphthalate, reactive ingredient in mothballs. The sensing equipment, it's sensory at that to pick up the mothballs that are in the building for furniture storage.
Wow.
It's, that's not best practice for pest control, broadcast in mothballs that way. But that's not difficult if they're not. The report also acknowledges lead and asbestos present in the building on the exterior. It was built in the 40s. It's all painted with lead and quite a lot of asbestos used in insulation. That's visible to anyone going around. So it was, it was known and that has a pretty predictable thing up the cost that you can put into a budget. So this environmental report is very good news. There were no unpleasant environmental surprises in that. And that really helps to reassure any investor and kind of set the budget for what's there. So those two items are complete. The third piece in the planning grant is preliminary architecture. Using the drawings that we found and the assessment of how the building might be used, it creates impossible floor plans and an imagery of what a revitalized factory building would actually look like. That's still in work and in motion. The architect's not published yet. So that'll be exciting when it comes to planning commission and town council of helping us imagine what this space might look like and how it could profitably be. Chat more about that if you have questions.
Well, I guess my question is, I mean, this is all stuff that the current owner really should be doing or a future developer. So it's wonderful that we're moving this along if we care about the revitalization of town and the environment and folks that are going to be living in that area, but. You know, we're going to get reimbursed. I know it's grant money, but.
No, the town's not, the town's not paying, right?
Right, the town's not paying. We got a grant, which is wonderful.
It's a state economic development sentence, but the state recognizes that right now this building is not doing anything for the state economy. And that's a problem. And it's in the state's interest to get these buildings back into productive use and recognizes a market failure, that there's all kinds of reasons why people who own buildings don't do the responsible thing and get them ready for a new century and just let them live there.
Yes.
And it's, the governor's office deals that it, you know, justifies a public partnership to make it happen. So they help us with it.
So is that all that was for work with the grant money or is there more to do?
The architecture is the remaining deliverable and that's the most expensive part of it. That's the majority of the money is paid for the architecture team to redesign the building. The, the field survey and the chemical engineering is important. Doesn't actually cost that much, so I'm glad we did it down there.
And so the architecture, I mean, that's, that's completely hypothetical because anyone can come in and say, well, I don't want to do that at all. I want to do something. Are they going to come up with a few scenarios? Are they going to look at our comprehensive plan and take that into consideration?
That's right. There's a, there's a couple of, we'll, we'll get a couple of different scenarios. And you're right, it's not binding and it's free. It's public information for anyone to look at. It's free to manage. It's informed by the town goals, by the market studies that we've done and by what is practical within the building. What do we think can be done there? And it does have a pretty specific market goal. What's the, what's the most economically appealing use in there? It is also looking at the legal framework within the state grant program. It's called industrial revitalization and it hopes to target mixed use and some new recreation that for a building to turn into a school isn't, isn't one of the goals of this program because the school is tax exempt and doesn't, doesn't do anything for the state economy directly. You wouldn't get, you wouldn't get public recreation space, right? They, they wouldn't draw it as a public hockey bank. Because that's not standing up in your business.
Okay. Does anyone have any other questions about that? Comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Matters from the public?
Sarah, I have a thought of John Roach. At the last meeting, there was a lot of discussion and I noticed there was also one this about the markets of tire fuel event, the sidewalks and the issue therein. And I was reading a little bit online. One of the comments made on the agenda that was posted online was that BDOT is in charge of the realignment of the intersection, which is true. However, the markets of tire fuel should be responsible for the sidewalks that they put in next to that area. And there was a recommendation to still possibly hold off on that sidewalk that was much discussed on the side closest to Route 20. So as I was watching the live feed of the parade, I found something very interesting. Compared to when I was a child, where the parade really started at the cobble down the street, right here where it connects to Archer Road and comes down. Now the parade tends to start right at the intersection for James River Road and Route 20. And something interesting I noted was that how vehicle traffic had to continue to turn off to James River Road. And it presented a problem that pedestrians were walking on both sides of the road. The pedestrians were moving as traffic was still moving. And this is a current day issue. There was a, a couple of discussions on whether or not people actually use that area, whether or not people are crossing that area. Well, this is the, the Fourth of July screenshots that show it does happen. Yes, this is a special event, understandable, but it is something that Scottsville will likely see growth in as the community continues to grow. So it's another reason to plan forward for those potential growth moments. And having sidewalks, as discussed, and I think you all presented it really clearly, having those sidewalks in place, while it may be something that the markets of tire fuel are not terribly happy about, it is something that it isn't a comprehensive plan. It's something required by the town. And it's something that the town has noted and needed. So I, I did want to bring that up. I have a few extras that I printed off. I just found it really interesting that this is almost in the exact area that was being discussed. And it's one of the biggest events that we hold annually and it's only going to get bigger, especially if the Blue Road tract is developed as well. So who knows if the parade is going to start further up? Who knows, you know, if more parades are in Scottsville's future, but it's worth planning for, right? I know there was more discussion also about the planned unit development and I had the opportunity to meet with Matt. And I know one of the proposals today was to talk about the cluster developments. Thank you. But I'd also just like to mention that within the overall ordinances, it might be also good to, to clarify the minimums and maximums of cluster developments and things of that sort, similar to what other communities have found need of beyond just the definition. Going through and figuring out what is the intention if somebody does a cluster development? What is Scottsville's intention for it before it's put into a planned unit development? Just a description of what a cluster development is in a small definition. If, I think it would be beneficial to actually clarify minimums, maximums, the intent with, without a cluster and things of that sort.
Well, sorry, what do you mean when you say minimums and maximums? Do you mean occupancy? Do you mean size?
So right now, this says encourage developments of equal or higher density than otherwise possible. And it also says cluster the developments for more efficient use of land and preservation. But for what it's Scottsville and, and what we discussed, what I discussed with Matt and one reason defining the cluster was really important was that at the previous meeting, Bird Street, the developer, the developers were asked, is this a cluster development? The common practice was nodes in fill. That's how I would classify it. So, but it was used in Scottsville's legal definitions as a cluster, but it doesn't fulfill what the true cluster development's intentions are. And so with cluster developments, when they're defined, most towns have minimums and maximums of, if you're going to build a cluster development, this is how many houses you could put in that cluster development if you're given development bonuses and things of that sort. This is how few you could put in, you know, you don't want to go fewer in your tiny little development than say could be done by rent. So having those options too, and I think I provided paperwork at one of the last meetings that also clarified and went through that to include breakdowns of the possible bonuses for more development, but how to include or couple in gross land usage versus different, you know, buildable land versus non-buildable land and things like that. So I think I gave copies to everybody. It was probably two months ago. But there was a really great handout that discussed a little bit about more, how to actually define within the ordinances those, the grid outline of how a developer could figure that out. So beyond just a standard definition, you're actually asking them to figure out the math side of it too, if that helps. So it's not just written. It's not just in words. You actually get a physical look at what Scottsville's hoping to accomplish when they say a cluster development. So I did want to bring that up with regards to the planned unit development. And again, asking everybody to kind of take their time and make sure it aligns with the comprehensive plan. Because if the comprehensive plan changes, you're going to have something that is not as well informed as originally intended. And it could be only a year old at that point.
Old Business Planned Unit Development, presentation by Community Climate Collaborative.
Thank you for wearing this outfit here.
My name is Javier Lawless. I'm councillor of Scottsville, Virginia. I live in Charlottesville. But I'm also a board member of C3, which is the Community Climate Collaborative. I had a discussion with the commissioner and with Matt Lawless. I was meeting with the president of C3 last week just to kind of get an insight as I'm starting on the board membership, give them a little insight about Scottsville and discuss my board membership. Of course, Town Scottsville came up in the discussion. C3 has, from the description, works in a variety of ways around the area. One of them is to help either businesses or municipalities that really don't have the capacity or the size to be able to address questions about the environment. So for example, they provide the Town Scottsville Energy Audit, which took into assessment our environmental impact primarily on Victory Hall and around specifically our electrical use, giving us suggestions, filling in a gap, something that us as staff can do on our own due to expertise, due to time, due to resources. Beyond that, I discussed a little bit about a little bit of guidance. And more of this is after discussing it with Matt. These are more general guidelines that might be more useful beyond what we're doing right now with planning a PUD and getting guidelines, but things that either you just plan a commission or even town council starts to discuss in regards to thinking about plan development, planning of development in the town of Scottsville. A little bit more rare than what we've probably be talking about tonight, but I thought it was useful to share it now to kind of give a perspective. When we're thinking about these things about either reduction of carbon or whatever priorities we have around the environment, one good thing to think about with development is that even if we aren't going to be as steadfast about working on with developers requesting, for example, EDB parking spots and EDB units built in at the moment, you can always request also for conduits with the idea that you don't request it now for it to be go, but to have some kind of preparedness for in the future. To save the composition of residents changes and the developer has that, really has it hooked up to be able to put in electrical devices.
I'm so sorry. Can you say that again?
Yeah, so one thing. Yeah, so one thing I did, it's like down the road, if you want to consider talking about, you might start talking about electrical vehicles.
Oh, yeah.
And parking spots instead of, yeah, no, sorry, EVs.
No, that's it, yeah.
And then you don't only have to ask for it to be ready at the moment when it's being developed, but also if you want to have some more flexibility, I'll put it that way, you can also ask for conduits to be built into the parking lot. So down the road, if it becomes more priority or the market changes, whoever's sitting on that land can be able more easily to start putting in parking spots for electrical vehicles. Right, yeah. So those are things to kind of consider. Along those same lines, there might be discussions in the future about solar panels over a thing. It can be, they can be built at the moment, or you can ask to request that they be built in a way to be ready in the future. So that's something to consider. Beyond that, beyond that, I think this is more of a broad stroke thing. It's relatively useful to start thinking about when we talk about these discussions about our resources on buildings, to ask how leaner it works. There's a concept of energy equity and the idea that if a developer comes in, puts in solar panels, sometimes that could go directly to keeping your parking, you know, parking lights on or sharing lighting between residents or businesses together. But a question of energy equity is how does the cost of energy as a resident adds to citizens affect you in coinciding with the environment? So these are questions that you can start thinking about in regards to equity as a town with residents that might be participating in developments. Kind of concept that has been rolling around, I know in Charleston, too, that's a question. When we're talking about the environmental changing to renewable resources.
So like in a multifamily or in some sort of shared space, this would be a concern?
Yeah, say on a complex, so you put solar panels, developer, you pay for your lighting in the parking lot, which is good for the hallways and the stairwells. But the developer's really getting that advantage of those shifting, that free kind of resource. While the question of equity, it's like those residents that they are not really getting those benefits. And then with energy equity, it's usually those most impacted by the cost of the climate that would benefit the most from these renewable resources. Think about it, live in an older apartment with worse insulation, worse windows, your building looks tired. Yeah, the last thing, and I would remember, I would kind of stress, these are more thoughts for in the future, rather than what we're doing currently, is that in regards to efficiency, we should always also be thinking about the same thing that we did here at Victory Hall, thinking about energy efficiency in the building. So in our energy equity, for example, for share, change some windows, installations, changing light bulbs. And that's another angle that people usually don't think about. We're usually either thinking about vehicles or solar panels or changing or reducing your carbon footprint of trees, but also just having good insulation on your building is a useful thing to have. So these are conversations that are in the future. I must bring this up that I kind of had an opportunity as staff to share that there's some capacity here and some insight that we can kind of harness and staff work with that. So as conversations develop on, it's more just opening the door to start having these conversations about what we can work on as the Town Scottsville. How about if those questions come up from elected or officials?
Well, and I'd like you to bring this up again when we have conversations down the road in your staff reports. And for example, if a plan came before us regarding the tire plans, it might be nice to mention it to the developer at that point in time and say, this is something we're interested in. What could you do in this way? That's your thinking, right? So just make sure you remind us.
Yes.
And let's leave the second thing at C3 with, is this one that we wanted to put together, a plan of specifics regarding this?
I think as conversations develop and seeing what's specific, I can see what they're capable of addressing or assisting us with the town. And I think one of their, one of their interests is helping, is helping local municipalities with these type of questions, especially when they don't have to do that with local businesses too in the area. And that's one of their reasons of the variety of things they do. So I think in the same way, as you both mentioned, it's a worthwhile conversation happening down the door with staff and figuring out what's possible. I have the same idea.
Yeah, well, I mean, just to continue, collaboration on those kinds of things would help us develop that. That's great. I think it's so much.
And how would the ARB feel about a solar installation on a roof? I mean, has that ever come up?
Yes, they have a specific exemption for roof up solar that it doesn't, it's an allowable change in the character of a roof. What we haven't dealt with in the historic district are the separate structures where you build something off to the side or build it on a vacant lot, like a small scale solar farm. Those are a lot trickier, but we recognize that adding them onto a roof is an important modern goal that we're going to compromise the historical work of the shingles for that.
Thank you.
They have been changed, yes.
Discussion and action on zoning text amendments.
Thank you, Jake. I'll present on the progress on this beauty draft. Since last month, I completed a couple of detailed neighbor meetings with Ms. Woods, as we mentioned, and with Mr. Onsworth. Rather than do a larger scale community survey, I didn't think would yield us a lot of useful information. I took some sustained time with both of them to go over the details of how this ordinance might work in practice and what they saw as the values and pros and cons of it. Both of those citizens have been very involved in previous meetings and had a pretty high level of knowledge, but people would expect to continue to be involved in any project review that came out of this. So I really appreciated their feedback and got some useful edits to the text on both of these. I also met with Mr. Ravalis on the Community Climate Collaborative perspective. And that was in good follow-up to the P-Mine Environmental Council, which had a little bit different approach and style on environmental issues. They think about environmental quality in a little bit different ways, but they both had good edits to share to the staff. So this draft has now been around, kind of its starting point came from professional planners with a pretty neutral, generalist perspective on 50 years of development best practice. The TJPDC made the first draft of this, and their current staff responded back on just assessing that this still represents good professional practice. The staff had turned over, so the ones who wrote the core of this draft for us aren't there anymore. But the current staff weighed in and enforced it. They didn't have bandwidth to do a lot of actual research work on it. And so we engaged a Berkeley group planning consultant on that question. Maxie Brown was the Culpeper zoning administrator for many years and retired in that consultant work. She agrees that this looks pretty close to what she administered in Culpeper and served that community very well. It's the town, not the county of Culpeper. So they're bigger than us, but they have some of the same values on historic preservation and quality development within their community. And they faced a similar beginning of development pressure from DC that we're seeing coming out of Charlottesville now at a different scale. So I think that's a helpful perspective that she's got. I also know some of the other Culpeper documents to be good best practices. The personal manual that we use for human resources started with Culpeper's document, and our government services committee marked that up. We did have direct outreach on this draft to developers and builders. I want to find out from them if this ordinance makes sense and is practical. And they don't know everything about it. There are strict standards for open space dedication and the ability of Planning Commission and Town Council to deny a project for all kinds of community reasons that are not, you know, profit based. So I think investors see that as a potential risk, that the path of least resistance isn't there. And I heard the feedback that if our, if we don't use this for problem solving, if we say we want creative projects and then deny them, deny them, this simply won't be used. That every investor who owns property still has options for buy right uses on their land and can still do the special use permit route, which we've seen at this. So those options don't go away. So there is a note of caution on this ordinance of it's meant to be a creative compromising tool. And if both parties don't use it that way, if a builder tries to maximize their profit and doesn't concede anything to the public, it won't work. Things will be denied. If the town uses this open ended list of reasons to deny a reapplication, it won't be used anymore either. So it's flexible enough that it needs to be taken in good faith. It's not as formulaic as some of the other review that we have. But that said, builders, especially small scale builders, appreciate the simplicity of this at six pages. It's one of our shorter zoning ordinances. And I think we're fairly clear about what it is that we're looking for. So I hope to avoid that situation where someone applies for something and wants a foul ordinance that they didn't see on page 25 of the text. The simplicity is good. So professional planners, environmental advocates, developers themselves. The last group that I talked with was the Admiral County staff. Admiral has moved away from this tool a little bit because they weren't getting the true mix of uses that they were hoping for on it. The vision, kind of the intent of these documents back in the 1970s was to try to plan and create walkable mixed use communities where there's a cluster of houses and plenty of preserved parts of open space, and then also a corner store and a little workshop and kind of a village where people could move around together, get to know each other and not have to drive all the time. And they mostly didn't get used to that. So the strongest critique of these ordinances is they're used to create sprawl. You dedicate the open space, you get the density bonus, but if you don't do the mixed use part, then you just have a suburban pod and another suburban pod and another suburban pod for miles and miles. And Loudoun County has done that, created homes for half of the amount of people, but they drive all over and the traffic is bad. So we don't want to do that. And the caution from Admiral County is you have to take your discretion and your judgment calls on me seriously and think about how they work together. And I think that gets to Ms. Wood's point very well of being cautious about the size of the applications and thinking about how they're used together. I err on the side of keeping it flexible because I don't want this tool to be unavailable to someone with a good idea. I think there's a fair point for putting in a minimum project size that maybe it's a waste of time to do all the review work on this when the project is only two acres. But I don't know, maybe someone has a two acre lot and they're looking at doing something special. And if they want to do the engineering and design application work, we can entertain it. And if we think it's forfeit or trying too hard on a small site, we just deny it. Likewise, Ms. Wood spoke to the sort of prospect of a bad faith developer doing phases that didn't tell the whole story. What we saw on our bottom road application where it was obviously a phase one, they admitted that it was a phase one and they didn't tell us what phases two through ten were going to be. And they said, because we don't know, like, okay, but for something that is important, you have to know. And so we're just not going to do that. So I, I don't think that needs to be in the text of the ordinance. I think that's a standard, a common sense standard that we can hold to. That if an application isn't telling the whole story, it's a direct recommendation to be denied. I think that would be the responsible, thanks for commissioning council to do. Think ahead, look for the whole story. If someone brings you a five acre parcel with the application only for 20 of it, what are you doing with the other three? That's, I don't think that's a hard question to ask or an unreasonable thing for them to hold to. It's not a totally vague ordinance though. I think there are some pretty strong numerical standards. Committing 25% of your land as open space. And then defining that that open space be for public benefit and serving ecological functions. You have to tell us what your open space is going to do. And if it's only, if it's only swamp, like, tell us why that's a good thing. You can tell us about species preservation and biodiversity, you can, birds and frogs. But if people can't walk in it and we're in town, maybe that's not good enough. And we say, you gotta build us a boardwalk or a zip line, something that makes that attractive to the public in some way. And that's control what we have. The calculation around density bonuses and the strength of that clustering versus stroming, that's also defined in the application. You'll get on this, here's the size of the parcel, here's the total number of homes, here's the total number of commercial square feet, and you'll get a density calculation on that, just like we have with our existing Village Residential where your base zoning is 0.7 homes per acre, your maximum cluster bonus is four. So that's a 500% increase. It's a big bonus in exchange for preserving a third of your land's open space. That same calculation needs to be shown here. And you can judge, are we creating too much density in a way that messes up the looking field of the town? Or are we still sprawling too much and not concentrating enough? And you get to weigh the trade-off between that cluster density and the preservation of the surrounding open space and public access to it versus everybody having a little bit bigger backyard. And that's kind of the key tension in how these plan developments work is do you want every house to be owned half an acre, or are you willing to accept an apartment building and a big park? It's the same number of people, it's the same use of land, which file anything doesn't matter. So I think this tool gives us pretty strong professional standards, flexibility to meet an investor who's coming to us in good faith. But a perfect veto if we don't like it because it doesn't promote a variety of uses or doesn't function as a cohesive project or doesn't provide a range of housing at affordable price points. There are lots of reasons to reject a project. And so I think we're on very firm legal ground of, we don't like what we're getting, we can clearly say why. And if an applicant really cares to work harder on a project, they're trying to fix that and they're like, but they still have the buy rights. So I'll have you to take more questions about how this might work, what's in the content of it. But I do think this is ready to go out.
Matt, can I ask, what was that last sentence you said? You do think it's ready to go out? Okay, thank you. Where are the comments about density? Like the min, the max?
In 14.14, the development plan requirements, section C shows that development plan. So you get the residential density calculations. We would then compare those to our other zoning options.
Okay.
And so they would tell you, here's my project, my overall density calculation is three homes per acre. And we could say, okay, that's in line with our Village Residential. Okay.
So this isn't, this is just saying, make sure you include that in your site plan.
You have to tell us what it is.
Okay, but it's not laying out.
And then we judge on that site what's acceptable. If their density calculation is 20 homes per acre and it's the densest thing in town, maybe we call that unsuitable. They're welcome to try, but they have to tell us what that number is. We can say, well, your base zoning would give you four and you're asking for 20. That might be too much. You have the same thing on the open space where there's the minimum requirement of 25, but if they go above your limit, there's more open space, they'll see that. More open space, you'll see that. I'd like to add to your point. In your proposal, thinking about what's important to the community planning collaborative, you got really detailed into some of the operations of the ordinance. How the parking lot is built, with that conduit of the future of the vehicles. Not only specifying where this whole thing is going to go, but how are they going to be here, if it's going to affect us. That gets pretty involved in the operation of the project. And those aren't normally zoning questions at all. You can try to write it in the other code. But but that, if those are of value to the community, this gives us a zoning tool to demand from where we would perform it. And talking to these goals about environmental quality and production carbon impacts, we cannot only say, if this project would be stronger if it had solar panels on the roof, but it would be stronger if that were meters to that for the residents. Normally you don't have that kind of negotiating power on that. So I I like that this lets us, if we want to get into a little bit more detail and try to negotiate on behalf of future residents, we will see a reduction in our electric bills because of what we're doing.
And could that be addressed in here? At least in the development plan requirements where you could ask the question, do you have any climate concepts to include or?
I I kept I kept that quite vague at fourteen point one H, just giving an overall goal of reduction in carbon impacts. I think to to Miss Wood's point about how the the technology changes and it's hard to think ahead. I'm I'm not sure that conduits in the parking lot is the be all and all solution. Right now it seems like a good idea, but I I wouldn't want to write that as a specific thing into this ordinance because the best practice in a couple of years might be different. If it feels like it works well on a site, you know, we can we can debate that on the application we get. But just encouraging our applicant to be environmentally responsible. They bring us the best we've got. And then if we see a space to improve it with someone like the apartment, solar meter.
Wasn't that also covered in the fourteen I under the ecological functions?
Yeah, yeah. And that that gets to what I was saying about how the the P. Mine Environmental Council and
Right.
Plan Collaborative have a little different way of explaining this where PEC has more of a history of like endangered species work and habitat work. And C three speaks more to carbon impact totally. So they they're less concerned with baby fish in the wetlands and and more and more concerned with how much power the building uses. Both are important, but I think we judge our site a little bit differently in all those statements.
Okay, so we talked about next steps of having a public forum, getting different experts involved. Do you feel as far as the experts, do you feel like you've consulted enough at this point? You said you spoke to developers and builders. Maxie Brown, what what did she have about this?
I'm solid, very, very similar to what she was.
What about as it relates to our comprehensive plan and our future goals? For example, we're working on the comprehensive plan right now. So should we hold off on this?
I think the the explicit connection back to the comprehensive plan was a point of feedback at first that was useful in here. So so to to mention that this is the, this is the point of the P. Of the P. U. D. Project that we have these goal statements that are listed here. These get more specific on our comprehensive plan vision, but they don't replace it. You're still looking for your final decision on all of your work. You're looking back at the comprehensive plan. Does this decision help us get closer to the vision of the town that is our ideal future? And that's what we're judging these applications on. So if if our if our comprehensive plan were to change and you know, maybe we decided that we didn't care about carbon impacts anymore. We take that out. That's that's not difficult. But I don't, I don't think that's so likely. I think this, I think these bullet points will hold up pretty well over time, but they can change. The sentence on, does the P. U. D. Project serve the public interest and the vision of the comprehensive plan? And does it do it better than what the base zoning provides? Because the applicant is going to be asking for P. U. D. As a rezoning. And we'll have to decide, are they better off in by right and special use permit world? Or are they better off with their special application that they've been given, what they're bringing on on P. U. D.? And we look back at that complaint whole and the whole content of the complaint of lots. So I think this has compliance consistency.
So this is in priority order now?
I think so. I I hear the the overall cohesion and unity contributing to the town's balanced and sustainable growth as being kind of the overall. And then we descend through clustering is sort of the point of the thing. A variety of uses creates the walkability, that's important. If you put this kind of thing towards the bottom, you risk getting those sprawl enabling projects that are residential bonuses but not actually mixed use. We really hope to see that mixed use here. Having commercial mixed sand helping global economy, avoiding car dependency and promoting those bikes and trails. There should be a density bonus in there probably. That's the motivation for all of this. We have an explicit rural housing goal, environmental quality, another way of saying environmental quality, another way of saying pedestrian. Some creativity on architecture, you know, points for style down at the bottom. And then even better, connecting that style on the whole rest of the town. It doesn't have to look historic. If there's going to be design review in the historic district, they'll be able to do that separately. But you get these aesthetic and style points at the end. If you can accomplish all of these other things and still have it fit seamlessly into the town. So it feels like priority order, but it's easier rearranging it.
What other experts did we say that we wanted to talk to?
I need permission of real crews, builders, environmental experts, mobility experts.
How did we do?
The
Mobility.
Mobility conversations that were most important for me were coming out of the conferences that I've been to, the governor's housing conference in the fall and the Main Street Conference in the spring. I wrote this draft with me to both of those and worked it with some of the presenters there and some of the grant agencies staff that we're working with. Emphasizing, and what I what I got from that was an emphasis on the bike and pedestrian and how the the most effective of these projects are going to be ones that people will not have to drive everywhere. And that's probably a good way of judging the whole thing, that it be the project be a little self contained within itself, but also connect really well by bike and by foot and by bus to the wider area, to downtown and points of town. And that the most kind of healthy and and popular dynamic communities are the ones that do that. Some of the, gosh, some of the expertise on this comes from our health department, too. I spoke with we were a health district staff as part of the strategic planning process and they've taken a a strong public health interest in building communities that promote physical and mental health. They know that if you can walk around and meet your neighbors, you're not only benefiting from cardio health, but you're making more friends and like meeting people better. And so that this kind of ideal walkable mixed use community is all around healthier than suburban sprawl or apartment towers where people don't know each other and spend two hours a day in the car. So so I I take mobility widely as like what makes a healthy Main Street, but also what makes a healthy person.
How many housing sites do we have in town? Including those that have been granted, but not necessarily built on?
What do you mean by housing site? Like sites that you could build on?
I know we we've we might have asked this question a year or more ago.
It, I think the answer depends a little bit on how how small of a site you consider relevant. The the big one, of course, is the the Blenheim and Alvin Dennis Springs.
Well, I'm, I'm, oh, right. And so assuming that those are cluster by right, not special use. So what would you estimate?
The 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 kind of build out mass of them?
Yes.
Roughly one house per acre. So it's it's about two hundred acres, let's say.
Two hundred plus, what's what's up there already?
I'm counting those.
Okay.
Because it's a hundred and fifty acres on this and another fifty acres on these ones. So two, two hundred acres and roughly one per acre.
And that includes what, how much for downtown also?
Downtown, you have thirty six approved here. And not, not much that's easily buildable of any size. I, my my first written example was low, but why aren't we compound on the hilltop here? Because it was seven acres, which is actually one of the bigger downtown courses. You've got, you got this one at six acres if you redivide the whole thing. A spot like that is two acres. But it it drops off dramatically from one huge one, one large one, and then you're working at two acres and five acres on all the others.
So let's come up with a number.
I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, but based on the clustering and the special use permit with the intent of the Blenheim track that was on the table before, it would be over three hundred eighty four houses just using the current provisions. If each individual track was built out and facing.
That's true. The chair's question was by right.
Okay, so not using the special use permit.
So what do we think all total in town?
If we if we didn't, without without our government doing anything and just letting letting by right happen everywhere that it exists, two hundred and fifty?
Two hundred and fifty more.
More. Yeah, taken, no, I'm counting these as already approved, thirty six. Roughly two hundred here and then another dozen or two dozen everywhere else.
In addition to what we have already built, homes that are already built. So you're giving me just what's developable.
Yes, yes. Are you asking me how many houses you're on a count map?
That, okay, so that's my next question. You said like two hundred plus thirty six plus twenty four?
Yeah.
Or two fifty plus twenty six plus thirty?
Yeah.
So two sixty, let's say two sixty to two eighty?
Yeah, and the the number of existing structures is in the census and I think it's in the neighborhood of three.
Okay, so.
Including some some vacant ones. So there's a, there's an on paper doubling of the town population. But that's been happening very slowly. There were, there were no big applications until last year.
Well.
The houses that were easy to build on are already happening.
Right. And so the comprehensive plan is, goal number one is looking for a healthy growth to target population of six hundred and fifty by twenty twenty. We're not at that. Going up to a thousand by twenty forty. Well, I think that we would probably be at a thousand if all of our sites that are zoned for development were developed at this point. So.
Yeah, I I I see, I see what you're saying. So why, why do this if by right goal is going to get us there?
Well, and and why, I mean, I think housing is important, but if we're already on track to meet our goal of housing, do we want variety of housing types to be number three and cluster of development to be number two?
Maybe this, maybe the scale is less important than how it looks. Maybe quality design is more important than the size of it.
Yeah. Or maybe the environment is more important. I'm just wondering about the priorities. And the bigger point behind this is that I mean, I, I, yes, I'm all for affordable and I know we need housing, but I I'm really hesitant to sign any more checks on building when we have a whole bunch of blank checks out there and they're not, they're not moving. So I'd I'd like to hear from Southern Development on what they're planning to do with the tracks up by Blenheim and the those that are already set aside for development. I'm sorry, what is that? Min Creek? Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. And I think that's a, that's a really good point. It can kind of go either way, that there's twenty eight house lots that are already plotted here. They've been there for fifteen years and nothing ever got done. So why should we do more?
Well, and I mean, this is the problem with granting a special use permit. You're granting it and it's a right, but we're not going to realize the benefit of it. So if we as a town decide that, you know, this is going to be beneficial to us, why spend the time? I mean, we've spent countless hours working on the plans that we've worked on and granted it's being brought to fruition, but how much time was invested in that and nothing's happened with that in fifteen years? So I think there needs to be an expiration date or or there needs to be some movement because maybe our goals have changed in fifteen years because that hasn't been developed. Maybe it's no longer viable or or desirable from the town standpoint. So I'm, I don't know. And this is it's not necessarily related to this pod, but this is the concern that I have. I want there to be some sort of you either need to utilize this right that you've been granted or You either need to utilize this right that you've been granted or it expires at a certain point in time or. I don't just want to continue to grant special use permits that don't go anywhere.
Right, right. And, and I, and I look at this pattern now as not a best practice. And I would hate for this style to continue all the way across here and just fill this up. And that, that would, that's, that is a by right possibility to just take two acre lots and cover the whole area. I think that's bad planning. And to, to just have these cul-de-sacs covering the site with no trail commitment. That could happen. That's, that's what I worry about. So we, I, I want to create a, a set of rules that we can use together to negotiate something better than this. I'm glad this didn't get built. It gives us a chance to do something better with that forest.
Well, we don't have any. Say in whether something better happens or not. We're committed to that unless the developer changes their mind.
That's right. They can, they can, they can either do this or they can start over, you know, wipe off the property lines and apply to something new. And, and so that's, that's where, that's where the density bonus comes in is to care it, that you can build 28 houses laid out like this. Or you can build 37 houses laid out a different way. And we'll, we'll give you the nine extra houses. If, if you get us a park and a truck.
Cause there's no open space in that.
No.
And there's no trails connecting. What are those, what are those plot sizes?
Two acres, more or less, couple, a couple of little bigger. So if that's the home type that you want, great, but there, there was never enough market demand for that, for them to get built.
So how do we feel about these priorities commissioners? I definitely want to sit with the, with this longer. And I think this is where the public input would be helpful.
In, in like a survey form? Could, could be.
Well, we talked about having. Focus groups, but very focused as in. What do you think about these? And, and again, it's going hand to hand with comprehensive plan. What do you think about these priorities? For our community for the next 10 years? Do you agree that this is a priority for our community?
Sure, sure. Okay. So like a, a meeting where we had some, some pictures of different kinds of, of projects that. Met some of these goals more or less well and kind of ask people to choose which of these do you like better? And we could try to feel out is, is it more important that there be. Housing affordability or that there be really good. Really good recreation options, right? I could, I could make it a swimming pool and a tennis court, but it's going to make the house awful.
Does this have to be order of priority or can we just say this, these are all our priorities?
I, I put the priority in because I think it's going to help me explain it and maybe help someone judge it in the future. But no, I mean, you take the priority away and then. This is a dozen things that we say are all important. That's fine. Cause that, maybe that's different site by site where in a, in a space that's more downtown than. You know, habitat isn't going to be as important and active recreation and housing affordability will be. A site that's far out in the woods, you want to preserve those trees and maybe you don't, maybe you're willing to let the homes be more expensive because of that. I could see that happening, project by project. And your, your priorities change based on where it is and what it is and who else is nearby. That makes sense. And then so just. Take away those words.
But does that designation speak to? Developers and things like that in priority order, is that the way?
I think it provides some clarity, both for the applicant and for me when I'm evaluating it, to say like. On the whole, I think this is a good project because it meets your high priority goals really well. And it fails a little bit on the lower priority ones. If that happened, I would say, okay, you met the top six really well and you lost some points on the bottom six. But on the whole, I give this project the B. See, if I, if I don't know which ones are most important, it makes me hard for, it's hard for me to judge. They. You know, they achieved 10 of them and failed on two. Is that, is that good enough?
Yeah, I kind of see the benefit of that.
I mean, I, if we're ranking it in order of priority, I think we need to bump G up. The housing affordability. Well, we sort of do that a little bit with B when you're talking about cluster.
Yeah, maybe unless you're getting, you know, really expensive duplexes and. You know, triplexes. Cause I, you know, I just think we heard from the community on the Upper Bird Street property is that, that that was very important to people that. At that small number of housing. You know, the development or the developers couldn't really get anything below the 300 range. And that just, that just wasn't cutting it for most people.
That's true.
I agree with that. I mean, you almost want to define affordability because, you know. They come back and say they can't build it for that price point. You know, what is it that we consider affordable? Obviously. The developers aren't going to have the same view of that.
Right. And I, I, I feel like we. We kept mentioning over and over again that that was a priority of ours. And Southern Development came in and bought all of the, the lots and now I don't know. If all of that has, you know, partnering with Habitat for Humanity and some of the, you know, Piedmont Housing Alliance. I feel like that's fallen by the wayside and that's not going to happen now with that Upper Bird Street. Development. So, I don't know. I was kind of disappointed about that.
Yeah, and it wasn't, it wasn't, you know, locked down or defined. You know, I think that it just fell by the wayside, like you said, Champ. Yeah, so. I don't know how that gets addressed. You know, that needs to be. Maybe more of a point of contention.
Right.
You know, this, it's sale proof, so.
Well, I think the way that you make it affordable is by having apartments. I mean, that's what people can afford. Like a one bedroom apartment or two bedroom apartment. That's completely affordable. It depends on the market. And this opens up the door for that. Someone may want to put in a. You know, a small apartment building, hopefully not a really large apartment building, but. Yeah, well, like before you bought your house, you were probably renting something manageable for.
Yeah, I'm, I come from Northern Virginia and apartments were not very affordable. So, so I've, I've seen it where, you know, you, you would think that that would be a more affordable option. And they were still through the roof astronomically expensive.
Well, and the houses were so much more.
Right, right. So I wouldn't want that, I wouldn't want us to think that it was addressed. You know, or covered by, by saying that we want, you know, clusters or we want higher density. And thinking that apartments are going to answer that question when.
It can be dense and expensive.
Right.
Definitely true. Definitely true.
Well, that was definitely my experience in between selling my house and buying my house here. I stayed in an apartment in Charlotte. I was paying more than, than I was, that I'm now paying for more.
So maybe we would want to put something about. Partnerships with organizations that focus on affordability. I mean.
Yes.
Doesn't have to be requirement, but it is something that we'd like to see.
Any like that?
Yeah. So, so clarifying G to spell out.
A little bit of how?
Yes. A- and it doesn't have to be exclusive, but you know, for example, a relationship with a. You know, a nonprofit or. I mean, I think even in general, any sort of partnership with a community organization that. Is going to care about the people in the community and not just the developer or not just the. Profit goal, but what are our community goals or one of our community goals? It sounds like is affordable housing. You know, we talked about health connections, maybe. I'm, I'm getting off topic, but this could be an opportunity for us to build in. Other community partnerships, but specifically for G, perhaps mentioning some sort of connection with a. Organization that focuses on affordability. Maybe that's tax credit housing, eighty, twenty or affordable. Affordable as in. The. Guidelines that are laid out by the county. Maybe we can adopt those guidelines. Forty percent, fifty percent of area median income.
Right. So you, you would want to see some explanation of how they were doing that and what the commitment group was going to be. Some, some places will show up. Sometimes you'll see a deed commitment that, you know, ownership is restricted in this way and, and that's permanent. Or here's the legal structure that we're going to use, whether it's tax credit or an agency partnership or what have you. But that's, that's what makes it more than a. A nice statement from the marketing team, that these statements are workforce supportable.
So maybe that can go into G, but then also get mentioned in the development plan requirements in their concept. Would that be appropriate? If, if applicable, mention it there. So we can get it in writing.
Yeah, I like that.
Market data, ownership structure, partnerships, how will you achieve your affordability? You, you need something in, in that application to, to where they explain how the median goal, so they're not judged whether they're mean. This, this has been. A, a tricky thing for local governments to administer and enforce. Charles from the Admiral, they both have some bespoke illness. Where they, they negotiate affordable housing solutions and then have trouble enforcing them, you know, 10, 15 years later. If you. If you have the developer make a commitment that only people with a certain income are going to live there, someone has to go back later to check.
Right.
And so. I'm trying to err a little bit on the side of caution. For my successor who's going to have to inspect whatever we approve on this. So if we forget about it and it doesn't get done, that's not going to satisfy you there.
Yeah, and having worked in property management for close to 20 years, I know how difficult it is to administer those programs and. And do the footwork to make sure that you're in compliance.
I mean, towards doing other things on site plan that would tend to make the places more affordable. You know. Because that's easier to administer and enforce. We'll, we'll, we'll see. You know, you put that information in there and the applicant can explain it.
Yeah, I mean. We're not, this isn't going to have a whole lot of teeth after it's built, but we, we would have to see if it needs our. If it smacks of something that will be adhered to.
What if the housing goal is in. In reference to the regional housing needs that we, we have. Regional data and reports that show here, here's the affordable housing problem in the region and what is needed to make it better. And if we reference that as a guideline, you can compare the application to. The regional housing needs assessment and say, does the simple mental best practices that are in there and does it move the needle? So your, your G might be. Accessible to different ages, lifestyles and family types. Showing compliance and progress against regional housing needs assessments. And then you have a third party standard to judge it on. And a housing planner that you could ask, you know, is this helping?
Yeah, I mean, again, there's nothing to ensure that it will remain compliant five and 10 years down the road, but. Hearing about how they plan to address that is helpful. That's why I wanted to see community partnerships, because if we know that they're engaging. Community agencies either.
We trust that as long as Habitat exists.
Yeah. Yeah. Or they'll have a contract with that organization and that organization will help do some of the policing.
Right, right.
I mean, if they're dedicating a certain number of their units to, to Java or to Habitat. Right. And that takes us out of that role because we, we shouldn't.
Yeah. The, the, the advice I've gotten on this is we, you know, either you do the community partnership like that and you trust PHA to run it. Or you go to the federal level with the tax credits where it's. IRS is checking it. The tax credits aren't permanent. They run for 20 or 30 years. But that gives you pretty good assurance that there will be consequences if they don't do it. The, the difficult kind of in-between place is when you set other goals around pricing, like you, you have to sell, you have to try to sell this house to a low income family first.
Right.
And then the poor housing planner has to check whether they worked very hard to find someone who qualified to buy it.
I like the idea of bringing in community partners.
I do too.
Okay, so we, we feel pretty good about the level of. Okay, so we we feel pretty good about the level of expert involvement. What what about community involvement? What about these priorities? I mean, I know a lot of it's taken from the comprehensive plan, a comprehensive plan perhaps may change. What if anything else should?
Are you hoping to get input to add to this? Or that maybe some of these are not a priority to put away over to?
Well, yeah. Well, I mean, for example, it feels like the first three are about housing. Do people agree with that? The fourth one is includes commercial and light industrial, do people agree with that? Those are the first four priorities.
Wondering how they they comment on that, you know? How how many people are really gonna be that engaged? I mean, I think these are all very important to us as a town, but as far as community, I'm just not really sure what we would get out of it. You know what I mean? Like, I want to involve the community, I'm all for that.
What if we had some focus groups where we, you know, we like we did for the small downtown area, you know, we hold them at the library and we have, you know, we we set these for forth as our priorities and we ask people to help us rank them in order of importance to see if there's anything we've missed, to see if these aren't the town's priorities, you know, at all, like maybe somebody doesn't care about coordinating the architecture within the development to make sure it looks consistent with the rest of the downtown area, like just throwing that out there for an example. But, you know, what if we had several focus groups where we just invited the community to come and share their thoughts and get involved?
It might be a good idea to put together something where we kind of have a real-world example of what this might look like. You know, a developer comes to us and, you know, we show how their plan meets our priorities.
Have a one or two examples.
Yeah, I knew you had put together some examples, but presenting that in kind of a scenario type.
It's hard, it's hard to read the code and and judge. You you wanna see like, okay, how does it work?
I think that this community has a lot of very intelligent people. I'm not at all concerned about or trying to suggest that they aren't. I just think looking at this, it's kind of esoteric. You know, it's just really not, you can't grasp what that might mean to the town. But, yeah, if we presented to some focus groups about different examples, how might that be strengthened for them? What kind of concerns might they have? Or this kind of thing. And is it gonna be just for housing?
No.
The part?
No, you could certainly do a mix that was mainly commercial. Maybe that would be an alternative to a shopping center.
Yeah, it might also help us see what what is working with this list and what maybe needs to be tweaks or add. It's to kind of go through, you know, a submission or two.
These ordinances exist in lots of other places, so it wouldn't be hard to get an application packet from somewhere else where the ordinance is kind of similar and say, look, this got this got approved under this other place's ordinance, do you like it? Or if you don't like it, what would our ordinance have to say? To give you a reason to kill it, so the bad thing you don't like didn't happen there.
So in order to come up with some focus groups, would you, you know, put an email out there or an article in the paper out there? Or, I mean, how is it that we develop these focus groups? Is this just like town volunteers, people that you know? I'm kind of looking for the action.
Okay, okay. What I've seen on these from other similar events is that they have to be open to the public, that will will notice them, let let the community know that they're happening.
Right.
But also special invitations and and we can we can judge on, you know, who do we know is knowledgeable, who has some expertise because of their work or who's been really involved and come to a bunch of meetings. People who already have contact information for it because they've already been involved. And say, you know, I I see that you care about this, you've been involved before, you know what you're talking about, please come to this meeting, which is held at this time. But then if they tell a couple of their friends and bring friends too, that's also good. Or if someone sees the flyer on the bulletin board at the post office and they show up, they're welcome. And the only space one made is the side of my room. There were some of these where we did them during COVID and if more than ten people were gonna be there, I started to get nervous.
And we already have kind of an idea of what we'd like these focus groups to look like. We were just sharing that with us not too long ago, right? Or you wanted to have a resident from downtown, a resident from uptown.
Yeah, we tried for the the diversity of backgrounds and viewpoints. Some people who grew up here and some people who moved here from other places.
Yeah. I don't know that it's actually a motion or not, but I'd like to suggest that we put together an idea for focus groups or just put together some focus groups. And maybe we can put these plans into action and get, you know, if it doesn't yield what we need, we figure out what the next step is then.
Okay. Thinking about the timing and the setup of them, one vacation, second half of this month?
Oh, no, that's not gonna.
I know, so do we do we wait to do them until August? Or is this possibly something that commissioners feel like they we don't know?
Well, one of my questions was who's gonna facilitate the focus groups?
Yeah, yeah. Hire somebody else or staff do it or can anybody tell us?
I I feel like just doing, you know, instructional design when I run focus groups for classes and things, I do not want the instructors involved because they get very defensive. So I don't, I wouldn't want anybody too close to the, you know, the town, I guess, running the focus groups because people tend to get very defensive about things. We put this in there because we thought it was really important and they start justifying and it shuts conversation down really fast.
Well, that's that sounds like a Maxie Brown activity, that. She she's done this, she's run these ordinances in places and can speak to, you know, I did this and here were the pros and cons of what I saw. And so to give to give some advice on what we set up, to explain to the public, but also not to be defensive about critique of this draft because she didn't, she didn't write this draft. I think that can go well.
I I would like to see, personally, I would like to see you all come up with suggestions of who to contact and what the numbers look like, like a roster of who would be on these focus groups and then coordinate with the consultant to do the and see, come together on that in the August meeting.
We we probably have thirty or forty people speak on the burden blend applications. I would start there.
Okay.
Those people have shown a passion and take an interest and have opinions. And I think we know how to get a hold of all of them.
Well, if we can agree on that at the next meeting, then we can put it in action when you're back from vacation.
Sure.
I mean, having it, we can handle it, I'm not thinking that it couldn't. But I think that would give us time to put together a plan. We finalize the agreement on that and then put it into action right away.
Do we want to have? The way that I've seen focus groups run in the past is that you have very defined sets, like groups of people. So you you define who your stakeholders are and you talk to that group. So you might have renters, for instance, could be one group, and homeowners could be another group, and people who live in the downtown area and people who live in uptown. And do we wanna break it out into really focused groups like that? Women of Scottsville or, you know, whatever. I think there was a woman, a focus group for women at the library when we were doing the downtown small area plan.
Well, and we don't have to reinvent the wheel, we have that data.
Right.
What were our priorities then and does it match this? Can we, we use that as a starting point and kind of narrow it down from there?
For sure, I think that's smart.
Is that where this came from, this list? Because I I know it came from the comprehensive plan, but.
Yeah, and and some of it was it was unchanged from the two thousand seven document. We have, we have asked some of these questions before.
I don't, I don't think it's a mistake to ask them again.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's kind of wild.
Well, and it could just be, hey, this is what we heard in the past, do you agree with this? Or rank these, do you still feel, and see if it's comparable to what people said then?
Yeah. I just, I'm, I'm all for, you know, speeding it up, let's get get going. I feel anxious.
I mean, has Ms. Brown organized focus groups?
I'll ask. If she doesn't feel like this is her thing, either pass it to someone else from Berkeley or Brown, one or the other. We've we've gotten a few other coaches on this kind of thing.
Okay. And sharing, and and I would say share with them the information that we've obtained from from feedback over the last couple of years, the focus groups that we did for the small area plan, and the feedback that we've gotten from the burden blending projects, and then see what they say from there.
Yeah, and the and the goal, the goal of this is to check these priorities because we're going to, this is the rubric we're gonna use to judge an application. And if, for example, this bottom point of coordinated architecture is actually really important, like whatever new stuff we build, it kind of has to match how the other buildings in town look. If that emerged as the most important thing, put it up at the top. We don't care how dense it is, as long as it has a slate roof.
Okay.
Well, it's come up in meetings before, it's come up as feedback. People wanna know that it's gonna look nice and it's gonna fit into the community. It's valid, it's a valid concern. All right, thank you.
Now for something.
Okay, site plan, tiger fuel, okay.
Looks like Mr. Revere and Ms. Schlein are here representing the applicant. I I did a short description of what's in their new submission, but I printed that out for you. Ms. Schlein, could I, could I make you a co-host here and ask you to explain your submission and what your request is this evening?
Sure, can you all hear me okay? Yes, all right, perfect. So primarily at the last planning commission meeting, I think the main item that we discussed was pedestrian connectivity. And so coming away from that meeting, it was, you know, taking the feedback that we heard from that planning commission meeting, discussing with our client and talking about how we can incorporate what we heard into the site plan. So what you see with this updated and revised version of the site plan is that along James River Road from the entrance moving west along James River Road to the adjacent property boundary is a five-foot wide asphalt path. Previously, we had a mulch standard shown there, and so that's the asphalt path shown now. And then extending from the asphalt path south and southwest through the adjacent property connecting all the way to Irish Road. Matt, thank you so much for the visual, sorry for not sharing my screen. But you can see that we expect a a mulch path in that area extending from the asphalt path through the adjacent property and through the stormwater easement that is proposed on the adjacent property through to Irish Road. So those are the main revisions that are included with this plan. We've also included a updated lighting plan that was not included in the previous submittal because a few of the specifications that we were hoping to include were discontinued. So we've updated that with specifications, lighting specs that we can purchase now and incorporate into the site, and that is now shown, I believe, on sheet C eleven. Yeah, but that is the extent of the revisions that were made from the last plan and I'm happy to discuss anything further. And as Matt said, Aaron's on the on the college wall.
So you you think this represents a compliant final site plan and your request here is for approval and then on to voting permits?
Yes, that that is correct. So for the site plan portion where we were kind of holding up our resubmital to Almaral County with the stormwater review, just to ensure that there were kind of no further changes to impervious areas or, you know, major grading revisions that we were working through with the planning commission. And but I think we feel pretty confident that, you know, what we talked about last time was really highly focused on pedestrian connectivity. And so we're kind of wrapping up our VSMP stormwater plan review with Almaral County and and resubmiting that, but we feel that we've, you know, presented a plan that has has checked all the all the boxes in compliance with the ordinance. And we've also had a bit of correspondence with Ms. Maxie Brown as well and and kind of have have received comments from her and responded and to the comments that though that were received as well. So we we feel that we've addressed all the comments that we've been made aware of at this point.
And for for my part, I agree. I think the site plan meets the minimum standards of our zoning ordinance. It it could be higher, of course, these trails could be built to a higher specification, but we don't require that they be V dot spec sidewalks. This does provide access to the adjacent parcels. And I appreciate that the applicant is making some improvement in connection off of the target parcel. That's not normally done, they're working on their other parcel as well and using the utility easement. That's something that I've seen the town make good use of in other places. This application's not as strong as it could be. They they could be better and more numerous pedestrian connections. And that is important to me, it's all through our goals and their connections that I'm gonna use. But I think it's minimally compliant.
Okay, Matt, could you take your pointer and show me exactly what would be paved and what would be mulched?
The James River Road frontage, the solid gray line, is a paved path. And then the hash mark, the perpendicular path that runs the edge of the site and down to Irish Road, that's not paved.
Okay, and so what would a mulched path look like to you? I mean, just like.
More improved than a than a deer path through the woods that's just, you know, the track of earth. It's it's got a guaranteed width and cross slope and vertical slope. And then that has that has that mulch material on it, which needs to be maintained so that it doesn't get overgrown with weeds, replace that every so often. And it gives you. Swishy surface, so it's not a smooth paved surface and it's not for wheelchairs. Um, but it clearly marks that it's accessible to the public. It's walkable and you've got a guaranteed standard on slope and cross slope and width so that it doesn't wash away. One of the reasons the applicant gave that they. Didn't want to improve this to a higher standard is the slopes involved. These later pages show the um. Elevation profiles along the lot and because of the grade change, um. They they can't build a V dot and ADA specification sidewalk along all of this because it would be too steep. So they'd have to do a fair amount more earthwork in order to get something that was um. Smooth enough in slope and cross slope to work well. The the rougher trail standard has a greater allowance on slope and works.
Okay, and so there's no provision for a sidewalk that goes up to um Route twenty? Is that correct?
It's something that they could do, but don't have to.
Well, I mean, I still, I don't necessarily agree with that, that they don't have to. I think it, I think we made a concession and said. They didn't have to if they put in the mulch path. I think it's in the comprehensive plan that or in the uh ordinance that they have to. They're saying they don't think they have to because it's. Not connected to anything. There's nothing on the other side. There's a road, but. I mean, I think that's the point of a sidewalk. It brings you to a road. Granted, there's no crosswalk, but that's. Another issue and and that's why we agree that. They didn't have to.
No, I understand that. I just wanted to make sure and articulate all of that and make sure what it all was about.
Mm hmm.
I was not here for the last stage.
Yeah, he missed a robust conversation on that.
Yeah, your, your, your code is adjacent property. So I. I guess you you can, you can debate whether across the streets adjacent. And the other that you've got is on commercial projects. Um, maybe maybe required, the sidewalks and pedestrian walkways may be required on both sides of the street. In commercial pro- maybe required in commercial projects if you deem it reasonably necessary. So you you have the discretion either way. So like I said, it it meets your meet your minimum standards, but you you also have have grounds to.
Well, and what is the purpose of the the ordinance? Um, you know, what was the spirit behind that, you know? Was it to? Just make sure that that was there or? I mean. Because it's not walkable now. They're not required. To kind of meet up with that? Is that, I mean, would that suppose it? It's through the sidewalk? And so if there was a store on the. You know, on the property that goes along Route twenty, then they would be. They would have to connect to that. But because there's not, they don't have to.
If if they, if they were doing, if they were developing both sides, would they have to connect them?
Well, no, if if there was a an existing store on Route twenty. Um, you know, down in that kind of bottom right triangle. Um, they would have to. Have sidewalks connect to that and their sidewalks or. I don't, I don't think I'm articulate in this very well.
I think I, I think.
I'm just saying, you know.
If if.
Is it because there's nothing to connect it to?
I see. If you, if there were already a good sidewalk here.
Yeah.
Would they connect into it?
Right.
Probably.
Yeah, because I think that that was really the purpose of the ordinance, right? To have connectability and walkability, but because there's nothing there, they don't have to. I'm just trying to.
When was the ordinance written? Do we know that for that particular part? I don't remember.
The whole, the whole thing is from nine six.
Okay, yes.
This part probably has to change.
Mm hmm.
All right, I'm not saying necessarily on this project, but um.
Yeah.
We really do need to look at that. Well, I don't think our walkability in this town is gonna improve until we actually. Get it going.
That's right.
Right, yes. I.
Yeah.
Uh, we we had quite a discussion, really interesting discussion. Can't catch it on the YouTube because it was really, I think it was a good conversation, but what we kind of talked through is. The mulch path. Like, there's, there's just so many places in town that don't have sidewalks. So building this, you know, twenty twenty feet here is not really gonna add a whole lot more to.
Sure.
But this mulch path. Can't really.
No, that could really in this, in a shorter period of time add value. So yes, I do see that. Uh, I'm just, you know, I'm mourning the loss of this, you know, uh, walkability effort. Um, and I think it could be clearer in the ordinance that that is important. Either to connect to future or to, you know, connect to existing. But nonetheless.
Mm hmm.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's very much on our radar now and and keeps coming back up in conversation. You know, for example, the PUD, it's 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 on that. So.
Okay.
Well, we have a long way to go to make it a walkable town, but um. Adding this mulch path is helpful because that will give people. Four times more.
Yeah.
And would be scenic and would be maintaining it.
So some of the dilemma that I feel in my recommendations is the responsibility of who pays for it. Um, that I I'm really excited about the grant funded improvements around town and continuing to do that. It's definitely in the public interest.
Yeah.
Statewide, and I feel great about the state paying for it. Um. My, my planning half and my economic development half conflict on. Do we, do we push by half a million dollar burden on this business for building something that everyone's gonna use? And not everyone who uses it is gonna shop there. Some people are gonna walk through this property and get their mail and walk back and not get a sandwich. So, yeah, what benefits it to that? Yeah. And and. Councils conflict on this. How do you balance the funding? And that's, that's part of your, your judgment.
Thank you.
Any other comments about the or questions about the site plan? Do we believe that it? Matches the minimum requirements? Okay, thank you.
It uh, the action item would be approval or disapproval of the site plan.
Okay, and do we need to vote on that? We're at the point where we're allowed to vote.
If you, I guess, a motion to approve or disapprove.
Okay. Do I have a motion? We need to either approve or deny.
I make a motion to approve the final site plan for the Tiger Market Fuel at one fifty three James River Road.
One second.
Okay, all in favor?
I.
I.
Opposed.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Um. No new business. We'll review the tire plant maps. Can we do a tour? Can we, can we walk through there?
Yes, uh, there was a, there was a study on the rap on the call at the beginning of the meeting. Um, we've done several of those. I I've probably walked through there six or seven times in a couple of years, so I I learn something new every time I do. I think they'd be very happy to.
Can you let us know next time you have one coming up? If if. Or I could reach out to Southern Development.
I'll I'll make some introductions and you'll, I'm sure you all can do that by. The question would be, do you want to have a special meeting where we ask questions on the record and do a formal tour? If three of you are together, it has to be that way. If one or two of you want to be up with a property owner and look at a building, I'll make the introductions and you can do that on your own.
If one or two of us are probably interested in.
But not at the same time, unless unless you want Javier to be there taking notes and it's open to the public and everyone can.
Oh, let's be it.
I'm Excuse me. Yes, but they're, they're just, they're, they're different levels of formality. But I'll I'll make some introductions and.
Okay, thank you.
That's why I won't make fun of you people, cuz I can't be everyone.
We have other things we could talk about.
You can have a party as long as you promise you didn't talk about it.
Right, we can do that.
Can we?
Absolutely.
We could talk about my garden all day. I'd love to do that. Okay, um.
I'd like to make a motion. Can we adjourn this meeting?
Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Yeah, I said.
All right, all in favor? All right.
Yeah.
Bye.
All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you very much, commissioners and justice.